Tax credit.
What am I getting paid for that? Again.
No worries.
My name is not in the album.
Senate.
Yep.
Twenty-eight, nine years.
That's a Jordan.
Just seven minutes.
You see, uh, is actually.
Are you in charge today?
Yes, you are, sir.
I just have to.
The seat.
It's the vote if you don't.
And it is, uh. I'm just wishing you to be in charge so that I am not.
You're trouble. What I tell.
We need one more separate head quorum. Lehos.
How do you know?
And Lehos will not be here.
Walk the grass, get green, finally.
Yeah, it is.
And it's not ready to degrade the air quality. Wichita time. Put me on that sustainability.
Today and she could ask during.
That's my way of hearing.
Don't do that. This thing that they'll talk about air quality.
Sign up.
We'll take it.
Sign it.
Thank you.
Oh, well, let's. Oh, then we can. Now, but, um. If you should call, uh, story and family.
So.
I'm telling you, I don't want to be one of them.
All those people back there. But since you have been.
That would hurt you.
They tend to never show.
And, and to me, it's very.
You're saying.
It's very.
All of them are.
You're going to get that's fine. There's something.
Yeah, you never know, do you? Spend some real.
How many of these?
The IP discussion.
How many of these do you attend?
Thank you.
Uh, I've got maybe like two or three other boards that I sit on. So golf board, excess advisory board. They want to kind of fill in here and there when other people.
All boards out and nothing else now.
Well, it is, and I haven't been able to make one there. It's just like, it starts kind of like during my workday. Other help with the video out there. It's, it's a little choppy. Yeah, and it's hard to follow along on some things much.
Change it. Signs I upload. Money magazine.
You're good tonight.
You're all right.
Yes.
I'm better now than ever.
That's what's coming up. On the screen.
No, it's okay. You know, conference. Asia.
That's. Think of mine in.
So. Smart guy. He is a smart guy. And.
I need one.
Smartest. I think this.
Oh, yes.
Well, I have three oh one, but we do not have a quorum. So.
We do not, and I have not heard anything from Mr. Eddie, so.
I mean, we can go ahead. We just can't.
Prove anything.
Yeah.
Um. It's good for me because I'm the.
Well.
I mean, I'm off sustainability now. Which has to come up again for vote next time. So I'll call the meeting to order. If Eddie arrives or Phil or anybody else, then we will become official. But, uh, we'll just go ahead. We have any announcements to make today? I've got two people for public comments. You want to comment now or during? Let you come up.
For the comment on a specific item.
Are they comments on the specific items that are on the agenda? Or are they, um, just general comments?
Agenda.
On the agenda. Is that Marjorie Fleming?
Do you want the agenda?
What is your comment?
Yeah, I was just CIP. Possibly.
Why don't you come up?
Yeah.
Come up to the stadium podium and give your name and address.
My name is Marjorie Fleming. I'll give you my mailing address. Because I don't really have an address right now. Six four four six. East Central Avenue. P O two two four Wichita. Six seven two oh six. I'm coming today to inquire about the Meridian Dog Park. We have been just waiting to get information about when it's going to be opening and when it'll be finished. I know that there have been problems and I knew there was grass problems and we're getting a little patience and speediness here. And I wanted to get back into our park and not have to go all the way to Murthen, which needs help, which needs work. But at this point in time, I know it's not on the list for the city to look at.
I can address the, uh. Reason why Meridian is not open or Canine Rooster. That would be. It has drainage issues that we had to resolve. Tim may be able to speak more on to that than I will as far as the completion of that project. But in addition to that, we spent all that time and investment redoing the entirety of the park, which meant reseeding it. And all happened immediately after we reseeded. If we were to unleash dogs into the freshly seeded ground, it would be destroyed and we would be back to a mud pit. So what we decided is that it's better for the end users to have a, uh, established grass surface so that it's not just immediately, you know, within the first week, totally back to a mud pit. So that's really what we're waiting on. I know that it's spring now, but we do have to get the grass to a point which, you know, we're not in control of the weather. We're not in control of the heat and, and sun and all that. So just got to wait on Mother Nature to grow that grass to get it to a point where it's not just going to be demolished when the first set of dogs go out and, and go on. So we, it's got to mature just a little bit more. Do we have a date specific for that? No, we do not. It's dependent on Mother Nature. So, uh, as far as, uh, yeah, thank you, Tim. Do you have any comment about the drainage?
Sure. Yeah, so we have, the, the dog park's not open. I've kind of seen some things saying that maybe it is, it is not open and open for public use. We do have, uh, we are meeting, I think, later this week to finalize and come up with an actual set plan to, you know, we've, we've been talking about it, but trying to nail down exact times and dates and everything, uh, when that should open. I think there's kind of some back and forth discussion about how much overseeding and reseeding and things along those lines that we can do, uh, to try to mitigate the problem. We have gone through and, uh. Unfortunately, you kind of need it to rain and you need it to snow to figure out where there may be drainage issues, which for a while there we did not have. So it's been nice to have some of the snow melt for us to see where there may be issues. We have, since it's not open yet, we're still working with the contractor to smooth out some of those areas because you can go out there with your naked eye and try to look at it. Sometimes it's not as easy to see. So, um, while there may still be issues, those are kind of good things for us to see now rather than later, uh, so we can try to address those. So we are still working with the contractor. They're still out there. There's still final things that they still need to work on. Now, we're, we're anxious to get it open, um, as much as you guys are. Maybe, maybe not as much, but, uh, we're, we're eager to get it open as well and get dogs in there.
Okay. Uh, have you guys tested the sprinkler system so that maybe you could help a little bit faster to? I know that we can't use water, but since it is a project of testing, have you thought about trying to utilizing to make sure the water system works? Because in the past, there's always problems with the sprinkler system.
Uh, so we have pressure tested and there has been some testing. Before we, uh, fully open it, I imagine that we will test it again. I think right now we're still waiting to make sure that temperatures go up because once we put water in the system, we have to blow all of it back out, which is more time and everything. So ideally it'd be nice because, you know, even though it's eighty degrees today, unfortunately, we're still dropping down sometimes into the below freezing. So I would like to make sure that we are well outside of that so we don't have to go through and blow out the system again. Because every time we put water, we have to blow it out so it doesn't break or crack or anything like that. But it is a new irrigation system in there. It utilizes actual irrigation systems used for irrigating turf like this. We originally had golf irrigation systems in there that did not, was not efficient or effective at all. So this is all new irrigation system that are in there. So all new control or all that stuff. So it should be much more efficient, number one, easier for us to control and reduce those issues that we've had in the past.
Thank you. I just need to cover all my bases when I get questions and they, you know, tell me about why. And I told them that today I was telling them to check the scene a while to find out. Thank you.
I guess while, while we're here, we are planning on discussing K-Canine Rooster, Country Acres and LW Clap at the same time to figure out game plan on when those can open. Ideally, we'd open them all at the same time considering all three of them. Prepare has been done and maintenance has been done over the winter. So they're all kind of in the same boat of needing grass to be established fully and all that. So, um, one's not exact, you know, they're all unique, but some of, you know, the same issue still persists in all of them that we still need Mother Nature and still need warm weather to get, make sure that grass is perfect for you guys.
Thank you. I've seen all three and they look awesome. I haven't seen clap as much as I've seen countryside. I'm just like really excited and so is a lot of other people. So, uh, we look forward to that. I'm looking forward to see the outcome of your, uh, playground being completed. To see that too. I think that is awesome since I had seen that long time ago. So.
It, it takes a little time, but we do, we do listen.
I know you did. Thank you.
I've got Z D Owens as well. Do you want to talk?
Oh, I'm already on the agenda. I'm just in the habit of signing and intervening.
Um, so we will leave the rest until agenda items. We've got approved minutes that, uh, we didn't approve the January because I objected last month. Gone back and looked at them and listened to the video. And I don't have major objections. There were some things that I thought were left out, but I just like stipulate that there's more detail, especially in Paul Gunson's report that didn't make it into the minutes. So I'm not ready to rewrite any of that, but if we bring that up next month.
So, yeah, I could go back and specifically go through the K ninety-six one and add more details with what Paul talked about if that was your major concern.
Well, there was, yeah. I don't, I don't know that he has a, he talked for a long time and there's a lot of detail in there, which if people want, they can go to the video and see that. I was also confused. I wasn't sure between Leho and Reggie and the guests that we had about the plaques. Who was asking questions? Who was answering the questions? And it seemed like Reggie was doing some of both, some of each. That had me confused until I saw the video.
Okay. That makes more sense. You want me to, is there a way I can clarify that easier on the minutes or?
I don't think so.
That portion?
I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe just say details in the video.
Okay, I can go ahead and put like a asterisk and say for clarification, please review videos and I can put the time in there if that would be easier. Okay. And then we can bring that back up off next month. Unfortunately, we couldn't approve it today, but if we wanted.
Can't approve any of the three that we've got there.
Are there any objections with the other two, the special?
Look at the. Um, items for consideration. Sorry, we can't do anything about your board. Just tell them that we're not here yet. We're going to Central Riverside. Come up, give your name and address.
And is there any time deadline for that?
Or do you sustain ability, they wanted it this month, but.
If they give you any grief, we can try to do a short like zoom kind of thing. Like just trying to say that too.
We can do a special, we can do a special meeting.
Okay.
Next month or like next week when he gets back.
Okay, okay. Just sort of want you have to, yeah, deal with anything extra.
Hey, I'm sorry. And one is my address is thirteen oh eight North Perry. And I'm going to hand out a couple of flyers for my athletic. So please forgive me for that. Yeah, I mean, I've got more than people in the crowd. I have, she said, she's from the Friends of the Campus Wildlife Exhibit who was created in twenty twenty-three and we aid in programming and development at Kansas Wildlife Exhibit and Center for Riverside Parks. Um, I think everyone can see that there's been a bit of a renaissance that has happened in Kansas Wildlife Exhibit over the last five years. In fact, last year alone, their engagement numbers went from about twenty-six thousand up to about forty thousand, which is an actual attendance numbers. I mean, there's no way to take attendance at Riverside Park, but those are actual engagements, like time they spoke with people. So our newest project is the renovation of the Dota that has been sitting in Central Riverside Park since nineteen eleven. It is one of the oldest built.
Eleven.
Nineteen eleven. It is one of the oldest buildings in the system. In fact, it was one of the first built. And I have also, if you'd like to look at them, a handful of news articles about the arguments happening when they were built initially in nineteen eleven. If you would like to know what, you know, park sports were saying about Central Riverside Park after years ago. The building has actually just been sitting there since nineteen sixty-five. At that point, they repainted it, put sort of a maze in it that children would go through as part of fundraising and for the news. So we met with Reggie and Gary and discussed putting together a MOU between the city and first of Kansas Wildlife Exhibit to renovate that space to be used as a classroom for Kansas Wildlife Exhibit and it could then be rented by individuals for use, you know, on weekends for parties, things like that. You don't have a forum and I don't need votes, so I don't know what other general background of what we're up to.
So funding or?
We would be raising.
Raising funds to support this renovation. And you talk with Reggie and you talk, you, you want us to approve it?
Right.
We can't do that today.
Right. We want you to approve, we want you to approve the project. We're going to raise money and you can't.
I've heard a little bit about it from a few other people, so I appreciate that. I guess we just put it on to next month's continuing.
Yeah.
And if there are questions or anything that, you know, want for the next meeting now or have any questions about this.
Well, Gary has something to. Reggie's, uh, perspective. This is going to be structured very similar to the Fresh Air Baby Camp project. So, uh, it, it would end up expanding, uh, programmable space for us, but the private entity would be, uh, raising funds for the remodel, the rehab, and then some ongoing maintenance as well. So, uh, that, that kind of thing would be heard based off of what we did at the Fresh Air Baby Camp. Reggie wanted me to relay that.
Sounds like a good idea.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. We come back next week.
I'll find you some new delightful historical photos before.
Okay. What is this? OJ Watson Hayesville Bike Path? Scott Weedle.
Scott Weedle?
Yep. I don't like it. TV.
Real life, yeah. This autograph.
Glad I came.
Whenever you're ready. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm.
I'm with the planning department and this is a little bit of a unique item for y'all. So my understanding is that you've got some interest in a potential vacation, vacation case we've got, uh, and we've received an application for a potential vacation. So, uh, what I'll do is I'd like to go through and I'll, I'll, I've got the point. I'd like to read off for you, give some history about the case, what it's about. And then I've got some slides to show you. And then what I would suggest is that the agent for the applicant is here in the audience. I would suggest you give them some time to speak. And then if you open it up to the public, that'll give opportunity for questions, comments. Then you can bring it back to the applicant. And at the end of it, if you're going to ask any questions, comments, make any comments you'd like. Does that sound pretty good? Okay. So, um, again, Scott Weedle from the planning department. Uh, in this case, what's happening is that an applicant is requesting that the city, uh, vacation of this city controlled property, as you can see outlined here. It's located just south of forty-seventh street. It's between Broadway and Seneca. So it's kind of in the middle in between those two areas. Uh, you may be familiar with it because the old, what was it? Cardinal Cruz lines, call centers in that area.
Just to the, it's on the north, this corner.
Yep, that's right. Just to the north of here. Yep. So in terms of the request, the applicant is indicated they are requesting the vacation in order to allow for expansion and development of a business campus. And I've got an illustration that they provided and I'll show you in just a few minutes. The applicant owes property to the east and west of this site. And, uh, the applicant provided a proposed plan. It shows a parking lot on property to the west, an expansion of the industrial use to the east. And at the subject site, this corridor would be developed, parted for a driveway parking lot. I'll show you that illustration just a little bit. In terms of the property, uh, the subject site of vacation is former Midland Valley Railroad Corridor. Apparently the city acquired this back in the nineteen eighties. Uh, the subject site, uh, was then subsequently platted just recently as a right of way as part of the Lang Fort Edition and the Georgia Pacific Edition. The subject site is approximately six acres in size. It's not zoned and it's currently undeveloped. Now, for vacation cases, we talked to a lot of folks about these, especially utilities and other services, so I'm going to give you an overview of those. So, uh, when it comes to utilities and fire, there are no public utilities in the subject site, which shot fire and stormwater do not have any objections to the vacation request, which shot Hall at Works is requesting that there be an easement for future extension of water. So there's an area or location that they can put a water line in. Comments from franchise utilities have been received. Evergreen does not object to the vacation and does not have any lines or equipment in this area. Cox does not object to the vacation and any relocation of Cox lines or equipment would be at the applicant's expense. Now, in terms of the roadway network, if approved, no property would be deprived of access to the public roadway network. And that's detailed in staff report, talks a little bit more in depth about that. But when we look at vacations, especially for, um, right of way, we just want to make sure that we're not leaving a property isolated without access to the roadway network. Now, the bicycle network. This corridor has been recommended for development as a bike way in multiple official city of Wichita plans. They recommend this segment as part of a bike way traveling from, uh, the path along the Art River in OJ Watson Park in that vicinity all the way down to the MS Mitchell floodway and ultimately to Hayesville. That's a distance of just over five and a half miles, five point six nine miles. Uh, this, uh, to, to our knowledge is the only abandoned north-south railroad corridor in South Wichita that's available for bike way development. Now beyond conceptual alignments, design for this corridor has not been undertaken. The former railroad corridor offers opportunities, but also challenges with crossing, with crossing arterials and the fact that there's an active railroad line. You can see it in this graphic here, this Union Pacific that goes diagonally across it. Now, the corridor has been tested as part of a K D H G program and determined not to have contamination levels would require remediation or paving of the corridor. And that's not true of every abandoned railroad corridor. We have sent found some that do have higher levels of contamination, but this one does not, which means it could be developed just chip rock, similar to what you see with the Prairie Sunset Trail out west. In nineteen ninety-six, the city adopted Parks and Pathways Plan, the Park and Open Space Master Plan for Wichita City County. Uh, it recommends this portion of the former Midland Valley Railroad Corridor for development as a greenway. So it referred to a lot of the bike ways as greenways in that plan. In twenty twelve, the city council endorsed the Wichita Bicycle Master Plan. It recommended that this portion of the former railroad corridor be developed as a shared use path. In twenty twenty-five, the city council endorsed the which, uh, the latest version of the Wichita Bicycle Master Plan. And it recommends that this portion of the railroad corridor be developed as part of the long-term bicycle network. It is not identified as part of the priority bicycle network in that same plan. So they have an overall network and then they had priority locations. This is identified as part of the overall, overall network, but not priority network. Then, uh, there were questions that came up about funding in some of the previous discussions. So in prior years, Wichita Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board has identified the development of the R Kansas River to Hayesville Bike Way as one of the top priority projects for funding in the capital improvement program. In twenty twenty-four, the board recommended that the city council prioritize completion and improvement of a variety of bike ways, but they did not specifically identify any specific bike ways as part of that recommendation. Uh, and that letter, the twenty twenty-four letter was submitted at the same time as planning efforts for the city, which, uh, Bicycle Master Plan update was undertaken. So I think that's the reason why they didn't recommend specific ones. In twenty twenty, okay, in the latest, sorry, in the twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-two capital improvement program, there is funding for bike way improvements. And there specifically was identified funding, uh, for, uh. Well, that doesn't make sense. It, it, uh, that back in twenty two thousand seven, it says, but I don't think, I think it goes back to twenty twenty-seven. Sorry, I think my notes are incorrect. What you need to know is that CIP contains line items and one of those line items is for bike way improvements. Now, because the amounts for bike way improvements are so small, they typically do not identify specifically what the projects are for in that grid, similar to what you're looking at later on today for park projects. But in front of the CIP, they will list out which bike way projects are intended for funding as part of that line item. However, in more recent years, prior years, they have identified this bike way as one of those priority projects for funding. However, in recent years, last two CIPs have not identified specific bike ways. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And then one, another question that's come up is, oh, but I do want to tell you that there is, the current CIP includes six point eight million dollars for bike ways. Again, it does not identify specifically which ones should get funding. Uh, and well, another question that's come up has been whether there are other examples of industrial crossings where paths are located. So, um, where industrial facilities on one side, two sides of a path and there's a cross in between. Examples of secure industrial facilities with a path or trail crossing do exist in Wichita. Examples of these types of crossings are located along Prairie Sunset Trail between Tyler Road and Woodchuck Lane. Now, it is not known how often the crossings are used and what types of materials are transported across the path. Security fencing is present and, uh, with gates will allow for the crossings. So I'll show you some illustrations that's going to happen. Uh, in terms of review, on February sixth, the MAPC subdivision and utility advisory committee considered the application and recommended denial. The vote there was four, one, one. So there's one abstention. One member of the public spoke against the application encouraging denial of vacation retention of the area for future bike way. On February thirteenth, the full planning commission voted to approve the vacation request. And that vote was eight to five to one. So one abstention. Subject to the dedication of waterline easement along the south portion of vacation area. And it's my understanding, we received that dedication document. So this is scheduled for a city council meeting. Uh, again, one member of the public spoke against the application encouraging denial of vacation retention in the area for future bike way. I think it was the same person who was at the subdivision committee. So, uh, possible actions, I know you're not a quorum, but in case you were, I would let you know that you can recommend approval. And if you do that, uh, you might indicate that, uh, the private property rights to anybody, property owner requesting the vacation may be injured or endangered because not vacating a property would impact the applicant's ability to expand their business. So therefore that would give a reason for the vacation. And if you, uh, wanted to recommend denial, then I would indicate that statutes indicate that a vacation may be denied if in the government body's judgment, the property is necessary and or desirable for public services. So with that, that's, uh, the presentation. I'll reach through some of the graphics here. So this is the area that we're talking about, again, just south of forty-seventh street. See if I can get this one. Here we go. Here's the staff report. I'm sure you're familiar with that. Here is the graphic. Uh, I know it's kind of hard to see, but this is where the Red Guard facility is. You may be familiar with the, um, boxes that they do. So, and I'll, the agent can probably talk more in depth about this, but these are blast resistant kind of construction and field offices that can be deployed, uh, on fly. So they manufacture them here. Uh, this shows the expansion of this, uh, industrial facility to the east[1781.36] This shows the expansion of this industrial facility to the east and to the south. And then, this shows a driveway through here, and then parking spots here. There's no illustration on what should happen here, but it's my understanding they may use that for storage or a future use. This is a zoning map, so this property is zoned industrial, this is zoned industrial, this is residential, this is TAF3, so allows them to duplex it in terms of residential development. Here's a graphic that shows the corridor that was recommended for the bike way. Here's the zoomed out version. Well, this is what's in the actual plan. This is the corridor, it's part of this corridor right here, OJ Watson Park down south, and then it jogs across, and ultimately goes underneath the turnpike, and then would be able to cross to get to Hayesville. Now, here is, that was the older Bicycle Master Plan map. While we were reviewing this, the city endorsed the current one, the new one. And so this is the map that shows bicycle network, and the priority network is identified in red. Again, this one is shown in the Bicycle Master Plan map, but again, it's not one of the priority network. This is from the 1996 plan, I believe, I think maybe it's 1998, and it shows this corridor. And then this is from the WAMPO Regional Plan, and it shows this corridor, although there's a dash line there of a different color. Here's a letter from Hayesville indicating their request to retain an area for use and development of the bike path. And here's a letter from the Bike Pad Advisory Board. When they would review the CIP or provide input, they would often provide a letter to the city council, and this is one of those that identifies this as a priority corridor for funding. Here's the CIP with pictures from the CIP showing where bike ways are prepared for funding. And then this is from a prior CIP, the 2023 CIP, and again, this is, it shows Arkansas River to Hayesville, so at one time it was identified for, specifically for funding. Here's a picture of the corridor looking to the north, this is from Google Street View, this is what it looks like to the north. This is what it looks like on 47th Street, looking to the south. Property owner at some point, I think long before Lang owned it, had to put up a fence, you can see it looks like it's been there for quite some time. So that actually is fenced across city properties, really, probably just along there. Here's elevations from the site, so it shows kind of a ravine in this area, some significant elevation changes here. This is a photo of showing the crossings out to the west on Prairie Sunset Trail. So this is Learjet Campus, this is Prairie Sunset Trail, this is the fenced area on either side, this is one of the crossings out there. Here's what Prairie Sunset Trail looks like. Here's Google Earth image, sorry, we did this rather quickly, but shows the gates that are in place, trail going through and paved, and it looks like, what looks like paved approaches on either side. Okay, schedule, we talked about that already, so. So with that, all standard for any questions, if you have questions for me, and then I would encourage you to bring up the agent for the applicant here with the same.
Or your proposed bike trail, terminating in the U of P lines.
You know, technically, I think it would end up on east side of the city, it doesn't go into the downtown. And we, I do not know what their intentions are for connections, obviously with the letter from the mayor, I think that they do intend to make that connection, but I'm not aware, how or where.
But this is private property right now.
Nope.
It's city property?
It's a city-owned property.
City-owned property, it's just fenced and not used at either end, and it's being used by these, this business to...
It's currently not being used by business, and against...
Park on one side and the business is on the other side?
Well, that's actually not being started yet, that's their plans, their business, they own the property on both sides, the factory is in place, industrial use on the east side, on the west side, it's currently undeveloped, it's vacant.
But they own it. City doesn't own any other property than this little strip.
The city owns, the city owns this corridor and continues on south.
Who maintains that currently?
Ooh. I don't know. Maybe the park department.
Behind that fence. Somebody's mowing it.
Question.
What district is in this, in my...
Yeah, it's a district board.
Need more facilities in District Board. Any other questions? From the board? Any questions from the audience?
If I could, sir, maybe with the agent or applicant.
Okay, we can do that first, sure.
Some before questions tomorrow.
Thank you, Scott. My name is Jay Hook with Botman Company, 315 South Ellis Avenue, for the record here in Wichita. Agent on behalf, the applicant is Red Guard, as Scott had stated there, whose campus sits on the east side of this, of what we're trying to vacate, and is wanting to expand to make a full-size campus, not only of the east part of the right-of-way to the west and the northeast. These two parcels are owned by Red Guard as well, so they're trying to kind of have a full-on campus there. Red Guard came to us, Botman, back in December, we applied for this vacation on December 2nd. Originally went to subdivision committee on January 2nd, where it was discovered that there was a bike path going through there, a lot of times with these, they're pretty slammed off, so when there's a right-of-way or a unused easement that that we have for vacations on, we didn't realize there was a bike path until that meeting, subdivision committee. Kind of, I guess it, we decided to defer it, to kind of talk about it, to talk with Scott and some other members of the city staff, to see what we could do, or if there anything we could do. We discussed the shared, shared use easement that we could provide for the bike paths to maintain through here, as well as allow for Red Guard to use this vacated right-of-way. The issue we have is, as Scott stated, Red Guard does make portable construction offices, other types of buildings or units that are blastproofed, therefore extremely heavy, and part of the plan is to store those on this side and be moving them back and forth with extremely heavy equipment and heavy forklifts, and we were concerned about, not necessarily liability, we had that discussion with Scott, but more or less just safety of people that would be traveling through there on bicycles, kids and families and whatnot. So we've looked at a lot of different ways about possibly bringing an easement down on the south side, and doing a little bit of a U here to keep it, but because Red Guard contracts with the Department of Defense, they have to keep their site pretty secure, so it was not in the interest, the best interest of all involved to do anything on the property at all, so we just requested that the bike plan, the bike path come actually over to the existing request to send again, and then just maybe come back. So just for that one little bit to jut out and make a U this way. Realizing that road, road bike paths are not as safe as this, but that in this particular area, we wouldn't be very safe in what we're doing anyways. Red Guard's looking at a $20 million expansion both south and west of what they already currently have. Adding a lot of heavy equipment and over, I think the estimate was between 50 and 150 new jobs in this area. And so we really feel like development now is a much better option than a possible bike path in an unforeseen future, so. That's all I really have, thank you. You have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you.
I'd really like to hear from the bicycle commission, I mean, there's, I really like to hear from the bicycle.
Well, I think the one individual that spoke against this was from there, in my line.
I'll clarify it just a little bit after you...
He's going to clarify it just a little, I'm not sure. We have, Scott had a letter from the mayor of Hayesville stating how this would be the one, one path that connected indirectly, and it's, we understand that, and it's not, it's a hard thing to do when you're trying to increase your economic viability and in development, and then knowing that you could possibly be taken away, this is a hard, this is hard conversation, and you had to really look inward, Red Guard had to look inward to say, well, what can we do? But in the end, it was just the most feasible thing to do was to request the whole things. I'm not sure what the bike advisory board has stated, other than what I've heard in public meetings.
I mean, went through that really fast, and I know they've just published their own master plan, right, and I don't know what...
And I would say, I know that, you know, Scott wrote up the bicycle plan, it was updated, and I know that the city council has approved some money to go towards bike plans, looking at the current bike plan, if you're pulling it up now, all of that, not all, because I don't, like Scott said, I don't think it's determined, but a majority of the funding is going to be right here in central Wichita. And I don't, there's a little bit more, obviously the priority is in red, not, priority is not, it's in, I guess it's brown color. There were a few more charts that were provided in, in the bicycle plan of how much traffic is through here on bicycles. It didn't seem like enough for Red Guard to move their development, so.
That's because it's not developed, because it's not.
Well, currently, currently, there's no bike, I mean, there are a lot of not-developed bike areas that still had a lot of bike traffic. But...
Any other questions? Any from the audience want to comment or question this? Otherwise, I guess we're just deferring this until next month.
If I, if I could, sir, can I answer your question? Yes, stay close, just in case. Okay, so the one question was about the gentleman's role. It was actually, I mean, it's public record, it was Alan Kayler who showed up there and spoke. He is the chairperson for the, my first name is, he's the chairperson for the Wichita Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. I don't believe he was there in his official capacity as an appointed official, I think he was speaking as an individual on that one, so. I don't think that the bike, the Bike Pad Advisory Board has not added this to their agenda, not requested us to come and present, so they have no official position that I'm aware of on this. Was there another question? I'm trying to remember.
Was a question about maintenance, who would maintain it? That was another question that wasn't necessarily answered.
Who is currently maintaining it? I mean...
It, it is city property that... Other than that, I, I don't know whether to tell you the split is between public works and park department, I'm not sure.
Don't believe that, and I could be wrong, because there's 900 and some different areas that we maintain, but I don't believe that the park department maintains that, and we would if we knew we should, and it was plotted for that. So my guess is, it's the property owner, the Red Guard, that's currently mowing that, it's not obviously from the street that it should be ours, so I don't know that anybody's investigated that, and that fence is probably older than I am. That's my, my concern when this was first brought up was maintenance of what was left and access to it. If this does go forward, there is street access to that other little tail, yeah, down there. And as we first looked into this, regardless of at least all of this, I don't know about this, but at least all of this, this as well. And so I was concerned of maintenance access for this little bit that is plotted. So, and we, we would, so that concern was nullified if the vacancy goes through it.
This is a bike, bike path. We'll just go down and done that around, because a bike path in five years. One, I don't know if anybody's ever set a 47th for those trains. They come into Pepsi Plant, they're either breaking at 55th Street or breaking by 47th, and those intersections are blocked for an exorbitant amount of time. And these trains are a mile long, so 47th or 55th is blocked. And if, you can see the tail of the train just south of 47th and 55th is blocked, no one's using that bike path. I understand, looks pretty on paper for a bike path to be there. But if you live there, it, it's, it's an issue. I know where the sidewalks are in that area, there's easier access to connect OJ Watson to Hayesville than going down the drainage ditch. But I, but I'm torn here between two things. One, I really despise when a master plan is created, and then it just goes away. And, and we don't follow master plans. Why do, why do, why does the city spend money on master plans if we don't follow? My other issue here that I look at is understanding Red Guard has DoD contracts and what that entails. They need a fairly secure facility to be able to do that, I understand that part. Also, understanding that that's not an ideal location for a bike trail. I understand it follows the drainage ditch, but there's issues there when you look at the actual rail traffic. It wasn't a question, it was just...
Yeah, I know, right now.
Off my south legs.
Really helpful. I, I would offer, sir, just before this, you had mentioned that possibly deferring this item to your next meeting. I do want to let you know that this is scheduled for the city council next Tuesday, so unless it gets deferred there, they will take an action on it, so.
We only make recommendations to the city council, so anything we decide they could make a difference. So, since we're not at forum.
Yep. And what we'll do is, we can take back, this happens sometimes at DAP meetings, you're not alone in not having a quorum, we can take back some, some notes, I don't know if the minutes will be prepared in time with the draft minutes, but we can always attach those as well.
Don't you need them by?
Tomorrow, Wednesday. Kind of a rush, sorry.
You can probably have your specific section.
Yeah, we would need the whole thing, just for this, I could almost do it once. It's just...
If you have it like that, then you could, I could definitely get it to you by like midday tomorrow.
Well...
You have an interest, but...
Item for agenda.
All right. I'm Tim Pelham.
Did you take your title or your...
Yeah, Tim Pelham, I am the principal planner and executive architect for the city of Wichita. I am in the Public Works and Utilities Department, but really, I work on park CIP projects, that's kind of the main chunk of the time that I, I spend on. This position was sort of, or used to be in Park and Recreation before some shifting around, so this position that I'm in has been heavily involved with the park department for many years. I think one of the things that I kind of wanted to hit on was a little bit about CIP projects, how CIP projects actually kind of happen. I think the first thing that I'll note is kind of how you can get to look at the CIP items. The quickest way is to go to, I think it's probably Department, and go down to Finance. And then I believe it is About Us, I want to say, nope. Let's see, Budget.
We'll also say, if you just Google "city Wichita CIP," it's the third thing down, so the first thing is just... So the first thing is just City Wichita. Second thing is Budget and CIP. And then third thing is the official CIP.
Okay, perfect. So, yes, you can go in here, uh, pretty easily Google CIP faster than this. The great thing is I have the budget in here and also has the, uh, CIP, which has, uh, ten years worth of projects forecasted. Is a great, I look at it very often. Uh, and it's something that is, uh, very critical for us for long-term planning for, um, large capital improvements. Quick way to get to that is just down here, uh, there's a quick link to it. And the great thing is, is that they have on here previous CIP projects. So, uh, if you're kind of curious on how things have changed over time, you know, well, in twenty fifteen, they talked about this project. Uh, it's nice to see, uh, you can go back and, and really kind of understand kind of how projects happen and, and all that. We won't spend too much time through here, but, uh, the great thing is that they have, um, the table contents linked, which is terrific. Pretty easy over here at Park and Recreation and the detailed project listing. I can click on Park and Recreation. It'll take you right to the, uh, to the CIP page. Uh, and this is last, well, I guess this is this year's, uh, so for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four. Uh, and this outlines all of the projects, all the CIP projects that we have. Um, I will note that this does not include operating budget because that is a whole separate document. Uh, this is for capital improvement. Uh, the capital improvement program, uh, has different projects in here for large, big ticket items. As you can see here, there's a number of the, uh, looks like the biggest one for this year is the Crystal Prairie Lake Park. Uh, so this is where all the main projects live. Uh, some of them, or I guess you could consider them bucket funds. Um, the, I guess one of those would be like park signage. Well, we have a hundred thousand dollars for park signage and what exactly, and where exactly is that, um, is not detailed in this document. So there may be, you know, ten different signs that we work on, but we're not going to list them all out here else that, like if you think about Public Works, if we talk about every single line of sewer, that would start to get kind of intense and heavy. So what we do is for Park and Recreation, we break it out a little bit more. And that's one reason why we do here. Um, having a separate page that we have, uh, this is in the, uh, capital improvement program. And that's over here. If you go to Departments, Park and Recreation, and you go to the About Us and Capital Improvement Program. And again, you can probably Google this and probably get it here, just saying. Um, and this is where we, um, break out, we have a, a little map here, uh, that shows where all the different projects are. Uh, former and current, we do end up taking some of them off as time goes on because we're likely to just have whole, this whole thing will be colored. And it wouldn't be exactly relevant knowing exactly what happened fifteen years ago. So we do, uh, break it up into five different sections here. Uh, I guess I'll bounce back real quick because I don't want to get too sidetracked. One of the other nice things, and I'm going to go scroll back up to the top here, um, is here in Table Contents, they have ongoing project summaries. That's another one. So just because it, uh, maybe it happened two years ago and it's a project that's still ongoing, uh, we still try to capture that. So if you go through here to the ongoing section, ongoing project summaries, you click on Park and Recreation. And this is where you start to see a lot of the, a lot of the stuff. So for example, um, in March, I guess a little less, a little more than a year ago was when we approved or initiated, um, funding for, uh, Country Acres Dock Parks. So there is, uh, it does have dates in there, which you can go reference if you want to go back to, uh, look at the, um, YouTube meeting for city council. This is a great way to see when it was initiated. Uh, you can kind of see when things are hanging out there just a little bit. Uh, it does take us a little while to close out projects. So we may see something on here that's a little old, but there is a process that finance wants us to follow to close out projects. And, uh, I try to make sure that finance is happy. So this is another great way to see all the projects that we have, uh, going on, uh, in the, in the city for, in, in terms of CIP projects. So that's a great, just a great thing to, to take a look at. And again, this is for all the different departments. If you were, or curious about, uh, roadways, uh, heavy equipment, uh, let's transit has one, airport has, they all have these ongoing project sections. So, uh, getting back to Park and Recreation, uh, we do break them up into five different sections here. Identified Projects, Initiated Projects, Scheduled Projects, In Progress, and then Completed. Identified means that it's in the CIP, but we haven't, uh, initiated yet. So just because it's in the CIP, we have to go back to city council to get it initiated. It's, it's a lot better that way. That way, you know, it may be in the CIP for that park signage, but when we go to initiate the project, we want to tell them kind of where we're doing the project. So that's when we're getting some of the nitty gritty. So it may be, uh, a year late, you know, it should be within a year, but it does take a little bit of time for us to, once we know we have funds to get started on it. I know all of, or all of the, uh, commissioners here have been listening to me do this a couple of times. My ass, I won't get into every single detail, every single project. And you guys have it in front of you. So if there are specific projects that you are curious about, you can come out, you can mention it. I, I do bold, um, for those in the audience, I printed off a sheet. It's the same information they have in front of them as it's on the website. Just didn't want to print off the website. Um, the same information, but I do bold, uh, the title. So they know that there's information that's changed on them. Uh, we do update the quarterly, um, knowing that, you know, things do change generally. Sometimes they say, sometimes they change. So for identified, these are ones that we still need to initiate. Sometimes we're just, they're just hanging out there because we need to get a little bit more information. Uh, sometimes, um, again, when we go to initiate projects, we want to know kind of what exactly we're, we're using it for. Because we may have thirty different ideas and we have boiled it down to five. So that's something that we talk about and make sure that we're all on the same page. Because gosh darn it, it's crazy how fast things move here sometimes because, uh, we could get, uh, an email from someone that says, hey, did you know that this was happening? And that kind of changes our mode of thinking, uh, in some of our priorities. So, uh, I did, I found that nothing, there's really changed just a lot. And I saw you all, again, these will start to go off into initially scheduled as we start getting them moving along for twenty twenty-five. Uh, Initiated, uh, some of these are going to be moving over into the Scheduled Projects here relatively soon. For Central Riverside, Evergreen for the twenty twenty-five playground. That is something that we are working towards the, so, so again, this is the individual, or this is a bucket project for the playgrounds. The twenty twenty-five playground rehab and development, that is a bucket project. So we have, it happens to be time for us to improve the playground, the sand playground at Central Riverside Park. It is, uh, over thirty years old now, which makes it one of the oldest playgrounds in our park system. There is a part of the playground that is much newer than that. Uh, so this project is focusing on the sand part of that playground. There's not a plan to go through and tear out the, the new, or I say new, the, the newer part of the playground. So again, the twenty twenty-five playground we have in twenty twenty-four, we use that at OJ Watson Park. We're using some of that funds over at Prokt Wetlands in twenty twenty-three. We use some of that on, I believe, Ailey and Meadows Park, I want to say. So this kind of bounces around across the city for playgrounds, uh, as does with, as you can see here, athletic field renovation. Same thing for athletic court. This is a system-wide bucket fund that we utilize when we go to individual parks as needed based on our feedback from the community, number one. And two, our own internal assessment on those, on the condition of those, um, amenities, uh, and assets. So for example, we go around and we do, uh, testing. I can't remember how many inspections, but it's, it has to be, it hundreds of playground safety inspections, uh, every year. Uh, same with testing or inspections on our athletic courts and our athletic fields. So that, all that information put into a, a decision, a DST, a decision support tool to help us identify and figure out what our next steps are and what's the next project for us. As I had mentioned, uh, now happens to be the time for Central Riverside to get its love, knowing that that playground again is over thirty years old. The goal for that project is to, um, add twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six money together because we, again, we get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which surprisingly is not really that much when it comes to playgrounds, um, to do something that's unique and special for the Riverside. So, uh, there will not be any shovels in the ground for Central Riverside in twenty twenty-five. Because again, the idea is to combine money to try to make something special, knowing that Central Riverside is one of our most used playgrounds across the, the whole, the, excuse me, is one of the most used parks across the whole system, uh, and is essentially located for a lot of people to use. Uh, so that's initiated. I'll go on to Scheduled, uh, trying to see here, it's a hot topic one. So kind of mentioned for you guys, um, yeah, a lot of these, some of these will be moving in, in progress here soon. I will be, I am very pleased to let you know that we are addressing, um, I'm sure, I'm not sure you remember, there's been a lot of reports about fires and vandalism at Connie Prairie Park, um, that have reported over the years. So right now we're working with a demo, uh, demolition company contractor to help take down a part of the shelter over there at Connie Prairie Park. Basically got vandalized the heck out of it and it's not really usable for anything, for programming or anything like that. Uh, it just simply is time for it to go. Uh, so that will be moving over to, over to in progress since we get that rolling, uh, to do some demo out there. Uh, Waltham Path for Chisholm Creek Park North, um, waiting to hear back and same with Sycamore, uh, or excuse me, that's a little separate from Sycamore. But, uh, Chisholm Creek Park North, we are waiting to hear back from the state. There's some issues kind of back and forth on requirements or ingredients and all that stuff. So, uh, there's a few of these that are just kind of hanging out there, um, that we just need a little bit more direction on since they're grant-related, uh, to move forward. Uh, so most of these will hopefully be well within, um, in progress when I come back in June. Other ones, athletic courts, that one got bid out. So that one will be moving over to in progress and will hopefully, I mean, it may even be done by the time we come back in June for athletic courts. That one, um, it was an over budget, but we were able to work with the contractor for them to, uh, come down to our engineer's estimate, which was great. Uh, it's always great to have contractors that, uh, want to work with us, um, and are willing to, uh, negotiate just a little bit to help, uh, make sure we get, uh, new amenities in our parks. The other one that I will note here is that, um, initiated, this one kind of moved pretty quick, actually in progress, I think. Oh, it should move forward, uh, a little bit more. Um, I don't know if I see it on here. Oh, yeah. Uh, it was in Schedule. Park signage, we had a great bid on last Friday. Um, we had someone bid in from out of state, which I didn't think that someone from our state would be interested in an assigned project. But, uh, there's actually a couple of people from out of state, uh, and we're able to get a bid pretty low, uh, within, for this project. And so we should be able to do more park signs than we thought that we were going to be able to do. So that, consider that a win last Friday for us. Again, for park signage, that's going to be taking those old, uh, wood signs, uh, taking them down and replacing them with, uh, metal signs, more monument signs. That's typical, uh, some of them will be a little bit smaller than that. Um, the wood ones, they end up, uh, being vandalized quite a bit. Uh, it takes a lot of staff time to go out there and maintain those park signs. Um, so having something that's metal, it's easy to wipe off, means pretty integrity on there. Uh, you wipe them down, that makes it a lot easier than having to go through and take down a bore. You know, the, by that time, the spray paints, you know, soaked into the bore already. Then we got to make a new one and all that stuff. It's a lot easier to maintain these, uh, metal signs, especially given like the special. Uh, let's see, in progress, um, let's see some ones that fit on, uh, downtown restrooms and hydration settings. You should notice that there are, uh, contractors out there over at, uh, A Price Woodard Park helping put in the first of the down, or the Portland Luce for the downtown restrooms will be drinking or hydration station there at A Price Woodard. Uh, Nascar Park will follow after the, uh, NCAA tournament. So figured by not having an open construction site in Nascar, would probably be a good idea to not do that. So we're going to wait till after, um, the, uh, the tournament. Orchard, that one should be moving over into, um, completed here soon. We are, uh, redoing the roof at Orchard. So we are very excited to do that. You know, as many of you know, roofs take a lot, they cost quite a bit to do. So, uh, we're happy to get those done because that means that hopefully we don't have to worry about them for a long time. Let's see, McAdams, uh, Park, uh, or the Charles Gustave, uh, Towns Facility, those are pretty much wrapped up. Just some minor details there. So I think quite a bit of these, I, I may have said before, but a lot of these, I feel like we're real close to getting completed. Country Acres Dock Park, K-9 Rooster Dock Park and Clap, those will all be done by the time I see you again. Uh, completed, I think we only moved one over here. This one was for McAdams. This is for the athletic field renovation. That was, uh, replacing a scoreboard over at Barry Sanders Football Field. Uh, it looks nice out there. When you drive by, it probably just looks like a real scoreboard, but, uh, the old one was, uh, needed to be replaced. So, uh, happy we're able to do that. Looks nice and clean out there, knowing that we'll start having, uh, you know, people out there. It's a nice open field for people to use too, uh, from the neighborhood. So, uh, with that, I will open up for any questions. If you have any specific projects or curious some topics or anything along those lines.
Center of the board. Questions from the audience.
Do I need to go up?
Yes.
Claire Willimer for G O two North Island. My question is about signage. I'm sorry, I couldn't read there. But when one looked at the CIP on park signage, they still have Riverside and Manisa scheduled for new signage and there was quite a stir in our neighborhoods. And your predecessor Troy had agreed to re, to keep the wood signs there. Is that still current? Cause I don't want to wake up to metal signs there.
Uh, there are.
Not just me.
Sure. Uh, yeah, we would have decided not to, to engage more with the community for Riverside, uh, specifically Central Riverside and all that amenities in Central Riverside. I was not aware that Manisa was one of the ones that was a concern. That was not communicated to us immediately that. So we'll have to, um,
Get more money for other things.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, I guess it'd be kind of nice to have a little bit more conversation about Manisa specifically.
Can I be put into that conversation?
Anybody else?
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm a city candidate. I live in Midtown on the river, just across, just across. I am so sorry. I forgot to say I want. And it's a scam. Anyway, I live right across the river from Riverside Park and everything. Um, I guess what concerns me is that when you take twenty-four and twenty-five funding so that you can do something new and different and better for Riverside because it's so well-used, when so many of us show up at DAPs and at neighborhood associations and at city council and ask for maintenance. And I looked at that particular, um, spreadsheet and it did say, uh, it said, uh, playground slash development. And I, when I perused through the whole thing, there were only a couple of them that had maintenance indicated. And we have a lot of, a lot of things need to be maintained. There's a pond that is just a swilly mess with no pump. Um, there, there's a five foot wide, um, sidewalk that starts just across the street from, uh, the Wildlife, the Kansas Wildlife Exhibit that goes towards the bandstand and then just as it gets to the bandstand, it dead ends. It, it's like from here to the wall where they could put a ramp and make it ADA accessible. But for some reason, there's a sidewalk from the street to nowhere. We have a lot of complaints about the, the lack of ADA accessible areas in, in our park. But metal railings are bad. The overlook, um, it's a WPA overlook where there's, um, form cement railing that those are all broken up and they, that overlooks the confluence. It's sort of on that peninsula where the tennis court is. It's sort of on that peninsula where the tennis court is. The replica of the horse track that is the big egg shaped track that's gravel in Central Riverside Park is completely inaccessible and it it surrounds the park, the center of the park, like a barrier to anyone in a wheelchair. I think Claire can attest to how hard it is to move a wheelchair across that or down that. But we just would rather, instead of building new things, have to, we like the idea of a, of a better surface, uh, resurfacing the playground and we love the idea of, of having a better playground. But if you're gonna have extra money, we'd rather have it spent on taking care of what we've already got and maybe making something, some inroads into better ADA accessibility. That's all. Thank you.
Tim, I've had several comments about that. I didn't realize there was a racetrack or a replica of a racetrack in the park and it creates a barrier on the sidewalks. So I don't know what can be done, how that can be approached or something about that.
Sure, yeah, I think that there are, uh, there are many ways to make that more accessible or make that better. I wasn't here when it was first, uh, so I'm not sure the exact thinking behind it, but there are ways to make that better. Uh, it is, uh, the issue, it can't be an issue, we're not gonna get a mower across there. Uh, so I understand that that can be, that that is an issue. Yes, yes. Yeah, uh, yeah, it's the whole ground, just the ground.
You guys seen it from the aerial?
I will note that, so when we go through the C I P project or list, we get, um, Gary, I leaned to you a little bit on this, but so when we get C I P projects, those are for, uh, generally large, big items. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't take walk and paths or park facility enhancements and utilize that, that's Central Riverside, not saying that you can't do that. When we get, let's say, playgrounds, we cannot take playgrounds that's part of, that's city council for them to decide how they want to allocate the funds. So when we get the C I P and we get, I'll go back here. So when we get sorry, bouncing around a little bit here. So when we get, let's say park signage, for example, or athletic courts, we cannot, it has to go to city council for them to reallocate that, those funds to something else. I guess we could go and ask them to reallocate that, but in many cases, uh, we have projects, we pretty much have like a list of projects that we have. So for example, there are numerous sand playgrounds that are inaccessible, for example, the one at Central Riverside that we do want to replace. We can't get parts for those, for that playground, that older playground, Central Riverside, because it's just too old. They don't make those, those products anymore. So that's something that we want to address. We do plan to go to, uh, the DAB, we do plan to go to whole, uh, town halls for the playground Central Riverside. So we do plan to do extensive community engagement and we're gonna put that on the right now, those sessions to do an RFQ to hire a consultant to come out and help lead those efforts. That way they, the designers are hearing it directly from the community, there's no middle person. So they're hearing all the feedback from you guys to the designers before we go build it. So, um, there will be community engagement work in for that. I think in terms of the maintenance, that is something, hearing this stuff is great for us because I'm not in every single park here, it's not in every single park in the whole city. So it is critical for us to hear that information. So I appreciate you coming and, and saying that. So I did take some notes, I do think some of these are kind of quick and easy, I don't say easy fixes, but some of them are. Well, Gary kind of talked about the maintenance side. On the C I P side, we can think things through and, and plan ahead, but that's kind of C I P.
Is the problem with the gravel, the gravel path, or is it the gravel?
Gravel and
Just sidewalk.
Try to push a baby stroller or a walker or a wheelchair on gravel paths.
Okay.
You can't do it.
Is the gravel, in your opinion, is it because it's been so long that the small particles of the gravel have gone down, it's just large rock on top? Or is it rutted? Plus there's a curb or road.
It's grass, yeah, it's curved. Getting on their stuff.
You can't push a wheelchair on gravel. It's very, very difficult to find a pick and shovel in many of our parks that you can get a wheelchair to stay on.
I wanted to reiterate something that Tim had said, but he said it quickly in that the C I P funds are not designed to be maintenance funds. That comes from the, uh, operating budget, which is not in this document that he's been going on. So there are two different pots of money. These, uh, dollars are, and I'm not a mountain expert here, but they are allocated largely associated with bonds. And those bonds dictate how those funds get spent. The operation dollars for maintenance, those can, you know, we can do anything maintenance wise with that. We can, you know, mow the grass, we can trim the tree, we can, whatever. But these are specific to projects that are associated with bond funds. Now, as far as addressing the specific concerns about the gravel path, we can absolutely take a look at that. I'm in no position right here to say we are going to do X or we are going to do Y, other than we will take a look at the renovation of it, we'll take a look at the history of it, we'll take a look at, uh, the desires for it and see where that takes us. Is there another comment from the?
Wondered when he's coming back. I just wondered when he, Tim was coming back, he said these things will be finished when he come back, and I was just wondering when he was coming back.
I come quarterly, so that's at the, at the end of every quarter. So what is that, March, June, September, and then I guess December. So it's generally every, every three months, every three, six, nine, twelve, yep, so back in June, so. Should, I mean, planning to have a lot of these cross them off the list by the time I come back, so.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, moving right along. We have, uh, continuing business, this is Alex.
So yeah, this was just the USD two five nine, uh, Columbine Park and McLean Elementary presentation that happened last month. That bond did unfortunately fail. You do have an email from Mr. Luke Newman, who unfortunately couldn't make it today. In front of you, kind of stating that that bond did fail, so there is no real continuation of news or business. That being said, he very, very much hopes to bring this back to life in some other type of way in the future, would love to work with us on this maybe someday and to please not write at all. Once again, that email is there for your perusal. And, and I, it's just, it was sent over for continuation.
Thanks for, uh, following up on that. I did bring it up with Councilmember Ballard and she had a number of questions, she'd heard from others. It's not gonna be easy. Moving right along, Gary, you have a communications?
I think all the communications that I had to talk about have already been discussed, uh, throughout the agenda. Move on to Katie.
Katie?
Those are quick communication updates, you know. Gary's keeping you on your toes.
Quick overview of our social media, the numbers again were pretty much the same this month as they were last month. Uh, the top post for the Wichita Park Recreation Page was about a job opening for a concessionaire at South Lakes. That post, uh, reached twenty thousand people, it's pretty impressive, uh, seventy thousand overall on the page, which was up eighty percent this month. OJ Waltham Park, uh, the rides, rides did open up for the season over the weekend. Um, so we're gonna see a lot more engagement surrounding Waltham Park, um, as we get into the summer, the spring and the summer. The announcement of the ride season opening, uh, was shared thirty two times and reached five thousand people. Uh, now the park, the Fan Fest is coming up in just a couple of weeks, uh, this particular post reached fifteen hundred people, but the uh, page overall was, the number of views for the page went up three hundred and fifty percent this month. So we're getting a lot of engagement around Fan Fest, um, a lot of media attention about this event, uh, everyone's excited for NCAA to come back town. Uh, Open Streets, uh, we do have two events coming up this spring, with the WSU event, uh, in April and the No Mar event in May. Uh, so this, this post was interacted with seventy six times and the page is up one hundred and thirty seven percent, which is pretty typical as we approach, um, each individual event throughout the year. And then Golf Wichita's top post was about the new golf guide that just came out for twenty twenty five. Uh, that post was shared four times, interacted with thirteen times, and it was clicked to view the guide fifty two times. So that was pretty exciting. The overall page reached ninety thousand people, up two hundred percent, uh, this month, and it was also up the previous month. So golf's growing as you get into the spring and summer as well. It's gonna be the trend we see on social media, as always, fall down a bit in engagements over the winter, picks back up in the spring. So that's all I got for social media. I do also want to give a brief update on our master plan process. I did send out a copy of our current draft of our RFP to all of the commissioners, uh, this afternoon, this morning. We welcome any feedback you have on that. Our goal is to have that RFP published by the end of this month. We're just getting a little bit of feedback from you guys, from a few other, uh, stakeholders, uh, before posting that for the public. We're hoping to get a lot of proposals from different consultants across the country to guide us through this process as we try to shape the future of park and recreation. So if you have any questions on social media, if you have any questions on the master plan, I'm here to answer that for you.
So I did see your email about the master plan. I didn't really study it, open the, but there's not, you don't want us to edit, there's no editing, it's just we give you feedback, say I don't understand page seven or?
Yeah, if, if there's anything you can explain, I'm happy to do that. Uh, you can provide, if there's a few things that you think are missing, I could, I could still add a few things into it. But overall, the content has been pretty vetted at this point. Uh, we did do a pretty robust, um, engagement with our internal stakeholders, um, that included some people from communications, uh, me, Tim, Reggie was involved, uh, so, and and, uh, the project manager from the city manager's office. So we've had, we've had a lot of people who are, uh, really big on the community engagement side of things for our department, have already looked it over and we've, and I've compared it against numerous other cities who have recently done master plan to see what it was that they looked for in their consultant. So, uh, so yeah, so it, it's been a pretty good spot, but definitely if you have anything that you think should still be in there, I'm happy to hear that and run it by the city manager.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, thank you. We have park maintenance and forestry updates, Gary? Doesn't look very exciting, but there's a lot going on in forestry and one thing that is, uh, missing from here is, uh, the ice and snow response that we had in February. All three sections had a significant response, it's detailed elsewhere, but, um, it took quite a bit of time. One thing that I want to mention, uh, because it is happening on our property, a upgrade to the gray water system from the Herman Hill Recreation Center, uh, is underway. It's requiring some trashing to lot, uh, to place some mainland pipe, uh, a booster pump was, uh, put in, all that was being paid for by the works, our department. Instead of just a sand pipe where we can, uh, get gray water that was under some moderate pressure just from the system, we're now going to have to essentially fire hydrant, uh, hookups that is going to be under significant pressure so that we can fill trucks, water trucks, uh, rapidly instead of very, very slowly. So it's a huge improvement, uh, it's been talked about for years, it's finally being done, and I just wanted to make you know where that that was happening. Now if we just get out of the drought and wash the trees. I've been, uh, had, when I reviewed the construction session, uh, it just stuck out to me that repair, 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 replace, those are the main things. I'm not gonna read every last, uh, line item for you, but, uh, a lot of different repairs. One, just to point out, uh, the repair fence at forestry, there was a break in, uh, some, uh, that happened there. So that's, uh, that's a bit challenging for us. A lot of graffiti removal going on. Again, repair, replace, remove, install, uh, things that they do, but it's just a significant list of line items that the Brett's crew gets accomplished in a, uh, in a month. And I'll tell you that, uh, one of the things that Brett did, uh, in oh, that, yeah, now, was it actually in February or was it in March, the CPSI? Okay, I'll tell you about it next time. Brett, one of his employees and Tim, uh, all went for some very good training, uh, regarding playground safeties. And Brett and Tim both tested for, uh, being certified as a certified playground safety inspector, uh, that improves our organization. Having what will now be three, assuming they all passed the, the test and I have every confidence that they did. But going from zero to one, to now to three, uh, CPSIs in organization, that, that is a marked improvement and, uh, it's just, it's just very good. So congratulations to those guys, and if they, if they didn't pass the test, at least they learned what was there, and you know, that, that's good for us too. Uh, so again, uh, remove, install, modify, those, those are the key words here. Uh, a lot of different things going on to, uh, in, in Brett's crew and making sure that things happen, usually all in the background. But we have a lot of things scheduled for March, uh, and there's just a number of little projects that take time. And also one of the things Brett's crew is involved in is playground safety inspections that I've mentioned already this, uh, during another report and that ties in with the CPSI training. One of our obligations is to provide safe equipment. If we don't inspect it, we don't know it's safe. And if we don't know it's broken, we can't fix it. So those inspections are absolutely vital to the safety of the community. Apartment, it's been very busy. Uh, again, uh, ice and snow, that's been a huge, uh, issue for us. Uh, it's something we have to do, but it takes away from what we would be doing. And one of those things is to get ready for the NCAA tournament, uh, that's, uh, been going on in Nasser, a lot of preparations there. Uh, there's pictures in the next slide about it. We're continuing to improve our, uh, staff with, uh, CBL training, uh, getting more staff uh, with merchant driver's license, most of the positions require it, uh, certified commercial pesticide applicator exams. Uh, preparing for those, getting those, uh, certifications, uh, done. That is also, uh, a very necessary thing. Uh, we are doing a little work, uh, to get the whole library prepared for the State of the City address for Sunday. That preparation is happening mostly today. We'll do any additional preparations, uh, later on this week, but uh, we'll do one more pass directly Sunday by noon, make sure that everything looks good for that. Uh, you see the crews there getting Nasser prepared for NCAA tournament, uh, and the Fan Fest. And while we just, on top of that, we've just been dealing with, uh, a little dumping tires. The contracted mowing season is about to start, so we're gonna be, uh, dealing with, uh, The contracted mowing season is about to start, so we're going to be dealing with the inspections that are involved in that and the sun calls that are involved in that and just the regular administration of those contracts. And then they have the fields that are being prepared, noxious weeds. Those guys are preparing for their season. And some of the things that they do actually need to be done now and that's all weather dependent. So when it's super cold, super windy, their window is closed on that application. So they, they have to wait for good, good weather. Refuse crew, the illegal dumping, it's, it's excessive. We talked about that a number of times. The container can't clean a crew. They've been very busy. Our goal was to, at the end of last year, was to get a contractor online to be able to use a contractor when either A, we were overwhelmed or B, we were building up our internal crew. And so in January, we had an internal crew and we flexed the option to use a contractor. And I don't have the exact number of times off the top of my head that we use a contractor in January, but I'm pretty sure the number of times we use a contractor in February was zero. So we've transitioned to almost completely doing this work internally, which was the entire goal. So I'm very happy with our staff. They are doing an amazing job with very undesirable work. I know this, was it this last week? So within the last two weeks, we had a citizen complaint about a certain area. The hot team had already identified that specific location as a place that needed to be cleaned up. They had done their work to investigate, to post, to do everything. And on the, in the prescribed hour that we were legally, part of legally, legally able to clean that up from both a, a ordinance standpoint, you know, in federal law standpoint. We had it cleaned up. So by the time the citizen complained and that complaint processed through the communications, the last communication of the day was, this was the, this was the end result. We're done. It's cleaned up. It's done. So I'm super happy with our, our staff to be so Johnny on the spot is the word. But they're, they're doing a good job. That is the last I have on, on maintenance. I'll see you after any questions.
Questions from the board? Sounds good, Gary.
So we have a director's report. Well, a lot of it happened throughout the, the agenda.
Any update on the interview process for the?
It continues.
Continues.
Yes. I don't know how many candidates have made it through that I'm not involved in those discussions. But it is saying three candidates.
Candidates have made, have been interviewed or?
Candidates have made it to, from what I've been told, three candidates have made it to the second round. They are currently in the process of going off course of things like the rec centers, the parks, what people are envisioning or people think parks and recreation does. And then to my knowledge, Reggie being.
He has announced that he is one of the finalists in the, in it. So he is one of the three. And I believe those interviews will pick back up again next week.
I, if so, I do not know officially. And I do not feel comfortable checking specifically.
It is an ongoing scenario.
Yeah.
But it has not been forgotten about.
There's no, no one person yet identified that has, we're waiting for it. It's correct.
There are no offers been made. We've got to finish the interview process, then the interviews will be evaluated and then decisions will be made. Job offer will be made. That's going to be made public until that final decision.
Appreciate the update on that. So no golf, no finance, no anything else and?
Finance just completed their stuff, so no finance. Golf unfortunately had an emergency pop up. They will, they had nothing significant to report this month anyway, due to all of the snow and the ice. We'll go ahead and involve that in their next one.
I think every time I run this meeting, we get out early. So. It's a presidential pitch, right? Yeah, if there, if ever there was. Don't tell my ass.
Otherwise, I guess we're adjourned.